Okay, so, good evening. We are calling the meeting to order tonight at 7:01. Members in attendance, I am Katie Silberger. I am the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have Vicki Danskin, Alan Rocco. We anticipate that Dave Kakamo will be arriving fairly soon, but we do have a quorum with the three of us. Our Secretary is Brogan O'Donnell, our Planning Director Bren White, and the Village Board Liaison Sally Rhodes. Before we get into the meeting, I would just like to say, I think everyone has heard, that Bren is going to be leaving the village. And I would like to just express thanks for the fabulous job that you did while you were here. It has been a real pleasure working with you. You have got a tremendous work ethic. You know, everything we asked, there was a smile and, you know, an effectively delivered job. So, thank you very much. You were the best. Okay. On tonight's agenda, and you still have time to reconsider. On tonight's agenda, we have three public hearings and other business, including website content and ZBA procedures, and the approval of minutes. For everyone, some people just walked in. We do have a sign-in sheet for the public hearings tonight. And we are going to ask people to limit themselves to three minutes initially, and then if someone would wish to speak a second time, a limit of two minutes. So, if anybody wants to sign in, there are--
So, in order to see if you have to sign in?
If you would, please. So, the first item on the agenda is the public hearing on ZBA 1418A and B, an application proposing a 6.25 rear setback and a five-foot side yard setback to construct a shed located at 25 North Front Street. Jacob Feinberg, would you like to come to the table, please? Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for ZBA 1418A and B?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we are now open. The Planning Board discussed this application on December 2nd, 2014, and made the following motion. Mr. Zeiler moved that the Planning Board recommend the ZBA consider approving this area variance. Mr. Litten seconded. Five ayes, zero nays, zero absences. Motion carries. Would you like to make a comment regarding your application? Well, we have to ask, would anybody like to speak to this? Is there anybody on that sign-up sheet who would like to speak to this?
No.
Yeah, no, that's what I read. On the agenda, okay, that's, yeah, okay. Let me just mention for the record that on the printed agenda we handed out tonight, it said a 10-foot rear yard setback when it in fact is 6.25 feet. Yes. Yes. And the other setback is as it's, just so there is a discrepancy between what is on our printed agenda and what I just read. What I just read is correct. Okay, so, no one wishes to address this public hearing? In that case, would you like to discuss your application?
Does the Board have any questions? I'm happy with the application as it is, so--
Okay.
Did you have some questions?
Okay. Then, if there are no, there's no discussion from the Board, could I have a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? Okay. So, would someone like to make a motion to approve ZBA 1418A and B? All in favor? Aye. We got an aye there, okay. We gotta be unanimous tonight. So, the motion carries. The second item on the agenda is the ZBA public hearing for ZBA 14-- Oh, you mean-- Okay, you would like to make an amendment to the agenda?
Yeah, it seems to me that we should have the hearing for 43 Center Street as the next item.
Okay, so, you're moving to amend the agenda so that we hear next ZBA 1413, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it's in regard to 43 Center Street area variance.
Okay. Third item on the agenda. Right, I'm, okay. Thank you. Okay, Alan, you had a second, and if we're gonna do it--
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that that's what it was. I second.
Okay, so, all in favor? Yes. Okay. So, is the applicant Joe Butler in attendance? Okay, if anyone from the public would wish to speak about this application. Did we open a hearing? Thank you. No, we didn't open the hearing.
You did it at the last meeting.
Oh, we're continuing.
It's continuing. It's continuation.
Okay, thank you. So, it is already open, it's continued. So, the building inspector provided a letter of determination regarding this application, which reads, "After reviewing the proposed project, I have determined that a change of use to the existing garage from a utility art work studio to a single-family detached dwelling is allowed. It is my determination that Section 2012-17C does not apply since the building is existing and not being constructed as the section states. However, the building does not meet the required front yard or side yard setbacks." The Planning Director provided a memo regarding this application, which reads, "The applicant is requesting to convert his existing garage from a utility/art studio to a single-family dwelling unit requiring area variances for front and side yard setbacks. The existing garage is located 13 feet 11 inches and 2 inches from the front and side property lines and would require 10 foot 1 inch and 12 foot 4 inch variances respectively. Relevably, the garage is also located just a few feet away from the neighboring house to the east. While I can sympathize with the applicant's desire to generate more income, I would be leery to grant a variance for a residence so close to a neighboring house. Based on Village Code, the intent in this district is that homes be located 25 feet apart. Village Code, Section 212-17C permits only one primary one- or two-family structure to be constructed per parcel in all residential districts. While this code does not specify that applicable buildings be proposed to be constructed unless does do not apply in this case to an existing garage, it seems obvious that the intent of this ordinance, that only one residential structure be allowed per building lot. The Planning Board discussed this application on October 7th, 2014, and made the following motion. Mr. Stephens motioned to make a negative recommendation on the application for Mr. Butler's property on Center Street, but request that the ZBA consider whether it can be approved as an accessory apartment. Mr. Zeiler seconded, four ayes, zero nays when absent, Miss Harshaw. Motion carries. The Village Liaison, Mr. Rocco, requested that the Village Planner presents findings to the Village Board regarding changing the accessory use component within the Village Code. After this process, Mr. Rocco requests a recommendation from the Planning Board." So, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Could I have a motion to either approve or deny 1413?
I would move to deny.
I'm just gonna butt in here.
Okay, that's fine.
Before you make your motion, I suggest you go through the variance criteria and just make findings.
Oh.
Supporting, whether you're going to--
Yes, no questions, yes. In my mind, it's such a significant variance request that it's completely inappropriate.
Do you want the list? I have a list. Yeah, yes, if you've got the list, let's hear the list. Area variance, whether benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, whether it's an undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties. And I think that on that list, yes, it definitely detracts from the neighboring property.
Whether the request is substantial, certainly is.
Yes, it is.
Whether request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I believe that will, and whether alleged difficulty is self-created, it certainly is.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you. So, did you get that motion out? We have the motion, right? We have the motion. And--
Okay, Dave, we are sort of mid-motion, so if we can leave you out of this one--
All right, leave me out.
Okay, sorry. So, Vicki, Vicki moved to the-- Yes, it was seconded. All in favor of the motion to deny ZBA 1413? Aye. Okay, the motion carries.
So, that's to say that this cannot be used as a primary residence?
Correct.
Because we are denying the setbacks.
Can't use as a residence at all.
Yeah.
Just a primary residence, it cannot be used as a residence.
Okay, yeah, it cannot be used as a residence. Okay, so now, we are going--
We're back to number one.
We're back to number two.
Number two.
So, we are now returning to the ZBA public hearing, ZBA 1416, an application for an interpretation regarding 2 Mohawk Avenue. So, Tim and Terry and Estee's here. And I'm sorry about the chair situation. Somebody needs to bring--
I'll bring--
--a regular chair.
Well, it seems to me that the Village Board needs to buy new furniture, is what it seems like.
You got that, Jason?
This is pathetic.
We can have a big sale.
Yeah.
It is a pleasure talking with you.
At least you won't be rolling. Okay. Before we get started, if anyone arrived late, we have a sign-up sheet for public comment on this. So, if you want to speak, please be sure you are on that sheet. So, first of all, I'm going to ask, can you get that sheet so we can start calling? Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm gonna mess this up. Say your last name for me.
Melissa.
Okay, Melissa. Would you like to address the Board?
Sure. It just recently came to my attention that I might need some information on this.
Could you stand up, please, and speak so that--
Yeah, there's a camera over there, we're recording this.
Yeah, I can't hear too well.
So, New Paltz can hear you.
I have been in the two Mohawk residences, and I visited a friend who lived in a six-bedroom apartment there, and another friend across the way in one of the other buildings that lived in a one-bedroom apartment, rented it to two people. And in those two buildings, they said that their neighbors have two six-bedrooms and two one-bedrooms in each building, and each of the one-bedrooms are rented to two people.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. So, I'm sorry, I'm not clear. Are you saying the two people are staying in the bedroom, or are you saying, so they're sharing the space?
Right, it's two people in a one-bedroom. I don't know if people sleep in the one bedroom. She said that, she phrased it, her friend was in the apartment, living in the apartment, so that it will only be rented to two people.
I'm sorry, it would only be rented to two people?
Yeah, it would not be rented to one person, it would have to be two people.
So, they have to share a room. And you spoke about two buildings that have six bedrooms each.
No, there's two six-bedroom apartments in each building, and two one-bedroom apartments. So, there's four apartments in each building.
So, are you saying that there are 12, 14 rooms in each building? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. 14 bedrooms.
Do you want us to wait for our turn, because we can help explain--
Let's wait. Yeah, yeah, just let us get this down. Okay. Okay, thank you. Next is Kenneth Stenger.
Yes, I appreciate the rule change. I'd like to swap to two minutes, three minutes to two minutes, so it will go, how much time is there to correct the record after the applicant's presentation? I've been sharing everything I said to the Board with Mr. Rogers. There's a fairly lengthy submission made to the Board, I don't know when, I saw it two minutes ago. I reviewed it. It contains materials that pertain to circumstances described by Mr. Rogers, I'm terrible, I'm sorry. Mr. Rogers has violations, and I just quit the test, but it is witnesses describe circumstances that may or may not be violations. And I, there's three things I'd like to just say, get done within two minutes. There's one that, there's only one person in the village charged with declaring something to be a violation, and that is building inspection. And if he is asked to declare something a violation, and he does not, then any aggrieved person can bring an application to this. We need to review that determination. But until he has acted or been asked to act and not acted, then his decision is not before you for review. And what I just saw, I only looked at this for about two minutes just now, it's about 30 pages, 20 pages appear to be a detailed list of violations of Building Code, of Building Permit, of plans on file. And the only person, that complaint properly begins with the first ability inspector, and that occurs to you. If he says yes or no, then you review his position. But this turn doesn't do that initially, because otherwise you'd have everybody here all the time with any claim of violation. Next one, and two, this original application was simply for interpretation of the code, and now we have these violations, which I would respectfully submit constitute something unrelated to the interpretation of the code. If you're going to make a separate application based on those circumstances, please do so. But, and that will have its own timelines attached to it, its own back matter attached to it. But I think it would be a mistake to allow it to go forward as one. Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, and the third person who wishes to speak is Todd Matthews.
Yes, hi. My concern is several reasons. I just, I'm concerned that this project necessarily isn't being, or hasn't been reviewed under the same set of parameters as most people do. I just want to be, you know, I'm concerned for the character of New Paltz, and I believe this falls outside of the character. I'm also concerned for the safety issues that this could present. There's excess residents in this complex. It seems as though it was presented as like two-family homes, but it's being chucked up into student housing, and it seems driven, from my perspective, purely from profit, and not approved sensibly for the village. It's out of scale, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is everyone who has signed up to speak. Is there anybody who did not sign up? Okay, in that case-- Okay, so, could I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
Wait a minute, wait, don't--
And then we ask them to speak.
The applicants--
Oh, you want them to speak before we close it? Okay, all right.
I reserve my ability to address whatever I hear.
Okay, so--
I'd like to, we have some formal comments--
You don't have, you don't have the limit on time, don't worry.
Right, so we have some formal comments, but I wanted to respond to each of the public comments that were just made. First from Mr. Stenger. And this is, you know, I'm having a little bit of deja vu, but we've repeatedly recorded in writing that we're appealing the certificates, we're not asking for an interpretation. And also, again, we'll refer to code as we consistently do. We followed the procedure as described in Section 21259A. One, procedure, written submission required. All appeals and applications shall be made by the Board of Appeals in writing on forms prescribed by the Board of Appeals, which is what we've done. So, the other bit of information that was brought up, and I can understand your confusion because it is pretty amazing to wrap your head around how a building that is supposed to be--
Do this as my presentation.
Okay. Then, right, so we'll include the Craigslist ad as part of Terry's comments. Oh, actually, there was one other response I had for Mr. Stenger's comments. In his note that he sent on February 3rd, and I'm quoting, "Mr. Jaffe, the building inspector, confirms that no violations have been found. That confirms that, to the extent the pending application depends on the existence of a violation, it is without factual support." To me, this is like, I don't know, like a dog chasing his tail argument. Our response to this is, "The grounds for this appeal is not just the multiple violations of code, but also the fact that the building inspector stated and written opinion that no violations exist warrant the appeal being heard by the ZBA. This cannot be the first case where a building inspector is mistaken in his contention that construction is code-compliant, when in fact it is not." So--
Okay.
Here.
Are you referring to the letter that Mr. Stenger attached to his submission on February 3rd?
Correct, and also his comment just now, where he's saying, "Because the building inspector has not made mention of violations, then our application, which is citing violations, is without factual support." I mean, that is the whole reason that we're appealing, is because there are violations. And we do not believe that the building inspector has correctly identified those violations. Otherwise, we would be somewhere else tonight. So, Terry has, did you have any questions about--
So, this is the building permit for Building C. Building C--
They can't hear you. The television, people can't hear.
This is, yeah, Building C. Building C was originally on the building permit, described as a duplex with three bedrooms in each unit. So, that would be two units, three bedrooms, six total for the building. That's the permit. That's what you had permission to build, and that's that. So, that would be this, okay? That would take the building. A duplex is a building which is two units divided either vertically or horizontally. So, this would be divided vertically with three bedrooms in each unit, total of six. That's according to the building permit. The certificate of occupancy--
That's the microphone.
The certificate of occupancy that was granted when this was done says the same thing. The CO describes this as being a duplex with three bedrooms in each unit, which would be a total of six. But in fact, this is not a duplex. As you heard in the testimony before, a young woman who was in the unit, it is a four-unit building, not a two-unit. And there are not three bedrooms in each unit, as the building permit allowed, and as the CO testifies. But there are six bedrooms in the upper units, and one bedroom in each basement side. Four units, not two. 14 bedrooms, not six. And what that means is, is that the building inspector did not enforce the terms of the building permit. And it means that the CO fraudulently misrepresents the building that was allegedly issued for. The CO says it's a duplex with three bedrooms in each side, and we know that it is a four-unit building, not two, and it has 14 units total. So, the building permit did not allow this, and the CO misrepresents the building that was actually built. The CO is a lie, it's not valid, and we would like it revoked.
Is it possible that these changes were made after the CO was issued?
Not really, because the CO was issued on August 20th. The first day of classes was August 25th. So, these people, the students and tenants, moved in the building as it is. There was no time to reconfigure it. So, this is as it was built, as it was intended to be rented, and as it actually is rented.
I think, Terry, another important point, though, in terms of the timeframe, could this have been changed after the CO was issued? We could easily just refer to the floor plans, as we suggested we did at the last meeting. The floor plans, any reasonable person would count the number of buildings, the number of apartments that were, or number of bedrooms that we're talking about. There are 14 bedrooms in these buildings. The floor plans clearly indicate that.
Okay, could I ask a question? As I look at this, it appears to me that on the lowest level, that would be what we'd call the basement.
Yes.
And this building was approved to have a cellar and not a basement, right?
Actually, it has a cellar, because the majority of the building, more than 50%, is below grade, and that is a cellar. In order for it to be a basement, you have to have more than 50% above grade, and this building does not qualify as a basement. It is by definition a cellar.
But Katie, I'm not actually sure what you're referring to, where the building was approved for a cellar or a basement. I've never seen any discussion of that in any building permits or the settlement agreement. The only thing that we've ever seen discussed was a two-family house with three bedrooms in each side, so a total of six in one building. Six bedrooms in one building. Six bedrooms in C, six bedrooms in D. But instead, we have 14.
So, you're saying that this is either C or D?
Yes, both of them have the same configuration.
The floor plans are identical in C and D.
I just want to keep it away from A and B.
No, we do not, no, we absolutely are appealing the certificate of compliance for Buildings A and B, too.
I just want to make sure--
Okay. But there was some confusion about that at the last meeting. So, when we were showing floor plans for A and B, that was absolutely relevant, because we are appealing that certificate of compliance.
And also, in terms of testimony, we have the Craigslist ad, which is recent. The people in one of these units, somebody moved out, leaving an empty bedroom which has to be paid for, and they're advertising for another roommate. And in the Craigslist ad, they say a couple of things that describe it very well. For example, it is a six-bedroom unit, so you'll have your own bed-- So you'll have your own bedroom, right? And that, again, that's a six-bedroom, not three. And it also says, "We've got two bathrooms, one on each floor." In other words, their unit is a two-story unit, not three, two. One bedroom on each floor, and the basement, which is, or the cellar, which is being rented out as a separate unit, also has a bathroom, but it's not this. So we have this as confirmation that it's actually four units and not two.
Where is the access to the basement for cellar apartments?
Floor plan for Building C.
Sure. There are doors on the sides of each building.
That's right.
So there's a separate door.
Exterior doors.
Yes.
There's another one in the back.
And then, are these basement for cellar apartments accessible from the main part of the house?
Technically, they could be. There is a, there is a stairway connecting the first floor and the cellar, but it has a door which can lock.
Which one?
Locked. So, if you had to, you could break the door down and get in there, but on a practical day basis, it's a locked door, there's no access. Their entry is a door in the back of the building, and so their entrance.
Is that keyed separately, that door, do you know?
I don't know. I would assume so, but I really don't know. And one of the other things, Building D. Building D, which you recall is a full three stories, and has the basement door in the front. On the floor plan, the front room was identified as a family room. But if it wasn't really a family room, then you would expect the front door to open into it, right? Family room of the room, everybody is there, but that's not the case. The front door opens into a hallway that goes all the way around the family room, so that you don't go in there. That room is private, that room is the bedroom, because again, it is the same thing. This is your downstairs apartment, and this is your upstairs room. In the downstairs apartment, what it was identified on the floor plan as a family room is actually a bedroom. And the door does not go into it, but goes around by the hallway to maintain the privacy that you would expect in a bedroom. And also, the bedroom is big enough that legally can hold two people. So they would rent it out. You've got fourteen bedrooms, but you've got fourteen or sixteen tenants, because you do have a basement room that can hold two people instead of one.
So these other bedrooms, what are the dimensions? Are they, I don't remember seeing them on the.
They're all here.
Dimensions of the.
I got floor plans.
Okay, so what are the dimensions of the fourteen bedrooms?
Okay, so second floor, Bedroom 2, which, again, I would think any reasonable person would count this as two bedrooms. Closet, closet, bedroom, bedroom. So this is twelve.
I'm sorry, what are you saying? This is Bedroom 2?
Well, this is labeled as Bedroom 2.
Right.
But it's two bedrooms.
It's actually two bedrooms.
It's two bedrooms with two closets.
The settlement.
No, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm still not with you. Where's the door into this bedroom?
That would be.
Right there.
Well, if it's here.
Right.
Then it's a violation of state law and village law regarding the privacy. And you cannot have an entrance to one bedroom through another.
Well, where's the door to this bedroom?
This bedroom is right here.
Oh, so.
There's also the.
So the door.
To get to this one, you have to walk through this bedroom first.
So if this was really considered a single bedroom, this would be twelve and a half feet by twenty-three feet.
This would be?
This entire rectangle would be twelve and a half by twenty-three.
Okay, so then, okay, I understand. So, but then my question is,
Yes.
By your information, when you say that there are fourteen, or eight bedrooms, not four, is that because you're saying that this is two bedrooms, not one?
Yes.
Okay, so then my other question.
Craigslist is telling us, and that's what.
So then my other question is, if the question isn't, as I understand it, the question isn't how many people can sleep in this bedroom.
Yes.
The question is whether this is one room with two people sleeping in it, or actually it's been divided, or re-divided, or whatever, so that two people are sleeping in this space, but they're each on either side of the partition.
Yes.
Now.
What is the partition? Is this line a partition?
This, this, technically it's called a divider. It's a, it's a division of the two spaces, but it doesn't completely close it as a.
How tall is it, do you know?
The settlement agreement also says no dividers, no partitions.
So can, am I, is it appropriate for me to ask?
There's a wall. You can't, there's two separate doors into two separate rooms. There's a wall between. It's a, and the wall was obviously not there when this was constructed, because it's just kind of like slumped together sheet rock.
So I guess what I'm asking you is, so I guess what I'm asking you is, is the room that you saw, the bedroom that you saw when you said two people are in it, they actually, for all intents and purposes, have their own bedroom?
Even though there's two separate beds, two separate rooms.
There are two separate closets on the floor plan.
Yeah.
With one entrance, though, right?
So how many entrances?
You don't have to walk through one by one to see if they have their own entrances.
Do they each have their own entrance? Okay, so that would mean that the divider was closed, and another door was put in here. So they each have their own entrance.
Is there, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there, are there pro formas that say how many doors into a bedroom there are?
I believe, and I'm not the building inspector that dealt with it, but I believe that when the floor plans were shown to the building department for this, these buildings, they required, our building inspector required them to take a door out, because two doors, in his mind, meant intent for two bedrooms.
But they kept the two closets.
I don't know that that's.
And the settlement.
A lot of closets.
Wait, I'm sorry.
The state law describes.
The settlement agreement said, "No dividers," which would mean that according to the settlement, they were supposed to close these in and make doors, have private rooms, which would coincide with what the gentleman said. Beneath the case, yeah, you've got fourteen bedrooms. There are eight up here, and there are four, one, two, three, four, on the first floor. That's twelve. And then you have two in the basement, here and here, for a total of fourteen bedrooms, that sleep possibly, because this is legally, you could put two people in there. So you could have sixteen tenants or fourteen tenants.
So our interpretation of these floor plans, it seems reasonable to assume that there are fourteen bedrooms. And we also have a person who's been to the building is describing exactly the same. And then we also have a Craigslist ad that's describing it that way.
Okay, can I ask a question? When I'm looking at this picture, where does this door go? When you walk through this door, what level are you on?
You're in the basement. And a basement hallway, which is here.
So that's where you are, right there. That's the door you're pointing to on the floor plan.
And you enter a hallway that brings you around past the bedroom and into the open, clear living area.
Okay, now, I'm gonna jump a little bit. Where does this door go?
That goes to the second floor, or not, the first floor. So that's right here. That's this door.
Okay. And how does the family living up here get to the rec room?
Well, first of all.
I mean, because isn't that what I just saw listed on there?
There's no family.
I understand, but we have to go with the fact that this is a two-family home. So how does the family go downstairs to the rec room?
You would go down here, but you would go down these stairs if it was a two-family unit.
Okay, and.
You would go down here, but you'll notice the door.
Yeah.
So in reality, the door is closed, it is locked.
So this is the door you say, you say is locked.
We have no idea.
We don't know.
Maybe we should all go over there now and see what's going on.
If you know from the testimony that we've heard
Yes.
in the Craigslist ad, that this is a four-bedroom, a four-unit building, the door is evidently permanently closed, so that you do not have people going up and down and interfering with the privacy of the tenants downstairs.
Got you. And then, these down here are the windows for what is a cellar? They have got one, two, three.
They are, they're here.
Cellar windows.
You've got two.
Those are cellar windows.
Okay.
Two. This window, you have a small window in the back.
And these are what, these are the cellar windows in the back?
Those are Building C. Those are the front.
That's the front.
Oh, these are the front, and C in what building is this?
D.
D, okay.
They have identical floor plans, but they look different. Their elevations are different.
I see, okay.
So how much of this floor is above ground?
You have less than fifty percent, because, and if you can look at your book.
We're not challenging whether that's a cellar or a basement. I have no idea.
Page eleven.
No, I, I'm just trying to understand.
Yes.
I'm not making any judgments yet.
If you look at page eleven.
We're just challenging.
There's a window at the Building C.
Oh, you mean the second part of it? The second page eleven?
Yeah, the attachment, sorry.
It would help to have page numbers and captions.
These are, yeah, attachment eleven.
Yeah, but still, I mean, let's find out.
So you're saying that this is what these windows are?
In Building C.
These windows look like this.
Here. In Building C, this building?
Right.
These windows are the ones you see in this picture.
Okay.
There are, and those are the only ones. There are no windows in the back door.
Okay, I just want to, I know where to interrupt, but I just want to say, in the settlement agreement, it's, where is it? Item number twenty-one on page five. There will be no dividers of any height, length, or width constructed in any bedrooms of any structure or tool.
So if dividers have been constructed, then it's a violation of the terms of the settlement, I guess?
And there are dividers on the floor plans.
And the other thing I want to point out is, she would mention the building inspector has affirmed no violations. Okay, so if you look at the cover of the book, this is the picture of Two Mohawk that was taken from the parking lot at Water Street Market. And down at the bottom of the picture, right in the front, you see the dumpster. Section 212.2C of the Village Code requires that dumpsters be enclosed. That you do not have them visually. And right there, you can see, it is not enclosed, so actually, yes, there are violations. Also, you'll notice, there are, if you count them all, there are eleven cars in the picture.
Yeah, and where are you saying?
They're in Water Street.
No, 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 I know where they are. Where is this actually?
This is, just down here is Mohawk Avenue.
So Mohawk Avenue is here, is, are these two cars on the side sort of part of the driveway coming out?
That's two violations right there.
But this is where the driveway is, is what I'm asking.
And those two cars are violating, because, oh, well, first this point. There are eleven cars. Of the eleven cars you see in the picture, only four of them are in actual strike parking spaces. The parking provided by the landlord, the developer, is so inadequate that seven out of the eleven cars are not in legitimate strike spaces.
But parking would have been, the number of parking spaces would have been stipulated by virtue of the number of bedrooms.
Should have been.
I also want to point out that some of these alleged violations are really sections of site plan review requirements.
Of what?
Sections of the code that apply if there's a site plan. And so in this case, there was no site plan, and so you know, arguably, many of these requirements are not applicable, because they apply when a board reviews a site plan.
So do you mean to say?
Excuse me, yes.
Wait, wait, may I?
So, so all I'm saying is that the building inspector might not find there's a violation, because these are site plan requirements, and there was no site plan for this property.
There is, Ms. Polo.
I'm sorry.
This is a site plan.
Excuse me. May I?
Yeah.
Are you saying that if there's no site plan, then the code requirements for parking are irrelevant?
I'm not talking about parking in particular, I'm talking about the items under site plan review.
Okay.
So if you have a private, single-family home that doesn't require a site plan review, although I understand the code may have been changed recently. So let's say you had your home before a site plan review.
Right.
You put a dumpster in your backyard. There's no requirement for you to screen that dumpster, because you were not required to get site plan review. These requirements apply when you're going through a site plan review process.
No, I'm not disagreeing. Site plan review is 212.23.
Right.
The dumpster requirement is 212.22, it's not part of site plan review.
Okay, so then that would be.
A dumpster.
The point I was raising is, many of the issues, such as the sidewalks and the stormwater, those are site plan requirements that are not, that were not dealt with, because there was no.
But actually, they were. The settlement agreement does talk about a stormwater plan that disturbs the calculation.
Right, it required review.
That was supposed to be calculated.
Terry, what were you going to say about that?
That is true. I'm just saying there was no site plan for the site.
Well.
So site plan requirements are not.
The statement that there was no site plan, there is a site plan.
So you're saying there was a site plan, but no site plan review?
There was no approved site plan.
No, if you look at.
Because they didn't go to the planning.
Right here. Here's, right here, right? So he says, "approved, Village of New Paul's Building Inspector." It was not approved by the planning board. It was approved by the building inspector, currently without planning board review.
Correct.
But you do have an approved site plan.
Also, you might want to, the building permit themselves say, "All work shall be executed in strict compliance with the permit application." Approved plans, like, it specifically says, "This building permit does not constitute authority to build in violation of any federal, state, or local laws." Like, come on.
That's fine, I'm just pointing out that some of the items that you identified in that document were not reviewed as part of site plan review. So there's no site plan, and so therefore.
The building permit says you have to follow the law. These are the laws.
I understand that. I also, since we're on the topic, I just want to make it clear to everyone that this board has no jurisdiction over building code, New York State Building Code, Property Maintenance Code, and Residential Code. So, I mean, I know we're talking about it, but they can't, this board can't make any decisions regarding the building code, residential code, property maintenance code. That's not been their jurisdiction. We're limited to zoning.
It's a local board.
Correct.
And has no jurisdiction over state law.
That's exactly what I just said.
Exactly.
Okay.
But there are enough violations of the local law that they are all pertinent. So, the unenclosed dumpster, 212.22, the cars parked on the driveway, 212.47, it's a violation. They also violate the New York State Fire Law, because this driveway constitutes a fire lane for access to these buildings, and the fire lane must be kept clear at all times. So now you have three laws that they violate.
Terry, where is that, on this plan here? Where is that picture?
If you turn the plan around, and you go down to the end of the driveway. Yeah, so that is, if you're looking from the driveway up, you would be seeing this picture.
Oh, okay.
You see the dumpster, there, yeah.
All right, and this is the shed that's cantilevered over.
Yes, the shed that was demolished, and new building is put in. Right, says existing garage, the existing garage is gone. The existing garage. The existing garage. The existing garage was this building.
That's what's there now?
No. That's what was there when they started construction.
Okay.
So county records describe that as a machine shed built in 1917 by 14 feet.
But also, doesn't it?
The new building.
The new building is.
It's a completely different building, 66% larger, and it includes a laundromat, either an office or a studio apartment with a kitchenette and a bathroom.
There's two offices.
Doesn't it say that the, that the, that they will take the existing garage and wasn't that the wording of the building permit? Or the permit for?
Was it their building?
The existing, the word was, "Taking garage."
Taking garage, turning it into one of the room storage.
Making it into.
Also will include a kitchenette and bathroom.
Right.
I have the, I have the permit and the hand-drawn application.
It's supposed to be the same size.
Yes, it's supposed to be the same building, just remodeled.
Same foundation, same building?
But they tore it down, built something that was bigger, and they cantilevered over the, over the foundation.
And in so doing, they revoked another law because the original building intruded into, required a side light setback. When they built the larger building, that's just they cantilevered, they increased the intrusion into the side back, into the setback. And they did that without ZBDA permission. Because in order to break a law or build contrary to law, you must have ZBDA approval. And they didn't get ZBDA approval, they just bid it.
I, I'd like to request, since we, we have studied these and these photographs are interesting, but not terribly useful without captions, that you circulate a list of captions so that we can put captions on all of these photographs.
The.
Yeah.
I also wanted to add, Terry was talking about the, the application for a building permit for Building E, the former machine shed. It says estimated cost of construction, $5,000. I don't understand how a building with plumbing for a laundromat, a kitchenette, plumbing for an additional bathroom, a completely, completely new structure that's nearly 400 square feet could be constructed for $5,000. And, you know, curiously, our local rules require any project that costs more than $20,000 have stamped plans. I'm working on a project myself right now. I got stamped plans. I had to pay for those plans to be stamped. So these, you know, even though they're adorable, these hand-drawn plans are not stamped. And that's troubling.
The.
This cute little house.
Page 25.
Page 25.
Of the attachments, okay.
Which page?
Page 25. The first, first 25. Oh, the first 25.
Page 25, attachment 25.
Page 25.
Okay, so this is the beginning of this. All the captions were the attachments.
Okay. Now. A list of captions will.
That correspond with the photos.
A, B, C, D, E, whatever.
They're.
That really will help.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, so in this thing. It's not it. We need captions under the pictures for it to be more meaningful to people who don't know the site. That'll be easy.
I'll try to, picking the pictures on page, in many cases, did not leave enough room for the captions.
No, you can, they can just be.
They're.
We can handwrite them if you give us the information.
There they are.
You've got text here. So here, you've got summary of case law on one. Yeah. Two, margin notes inside blah, blah, blah. Then we get to page three, this is the site plan. Okay, well, wait, we keep on going till we get to the pictures. Let's get to the pictures. I'm following, Terry. Okay, so page 11. So we go here to 11. Foundation, front, back of Building C showing that portion of. See, I'm looking at note 11, so you can just.
Okay.
Take this and edit on this page. Put my own captions on this page. Okay. Yes. And that starts on 26.
For example, if you look at page 27.
Yeah.
For attachment number 20.
Yes.
It's really too big to be able to fit on the page with the picture. So it was just too awkward to try and do them all on the page. That's why they were done separately.
So you just have to look at this and then you see what they are.
Oh, they're in order, they're in order of this?
They're all, yeah, so the attachments are numbered and they correspond with the.
So in other words, this is number one?
Do you guys have an extra copy that you can go to the property attorney?
We'll make an electronic copy.
Okay.
For example, this is attachment 11. And if you go over here to page 26. You go to the page, there's attachment 11. There's the captions for that attachment.
Oh, so in other words, pictures aren't in relationship to here exactly. They are.
Yes.
So, okay, this is 11. And this is 12?
No, they're both 11.
Oh, they're both 11.
Look at the bottom of the page.
See what I mean?
The bottom of the page on the right. Well, I could do actually.
This is so unfair. I don't have a copy of this to follow, and they don't have a copy for my client. My client's work is getting crucified here against accusations I'd never heard or seen until 10 minutes ago. And they don't have an extra copy for me to look at?
You can use mine.
That's fine.
And the secretary has the copy. She can have it for you at any time if you would ask.
As long as I can follow. I'm sorry.
So the, the statement by the building inspector that there are no violations, right here in the picture, you see, at least for, you see the violation of the fire code with the cars parked in the driveway. You see the violation of the two lanes.
Yeah, I understand in that.
Okay, so there they are.
Just a point of order here. We're talking about a recent letter by the building inspector that there are no violations. If you are going to challenge that based on these current allegations, that would be a separate application.
We're not challenging.
Right, but I'm saying perhaps if that's the determination that you want to challenge.
The developer's attorney was presenting that as some sort of useful information. We are, we are appealing the certificates of compliance when they were issued.
Heard. The building inspector is contesting our case, our appeal. He's saying we can't appeal because there are no violations. There are violations. There are a lot of violations.
I understand what you're saying.
Absolutely not what the building inspector said, and I cannot stand still.
Excuse me, this is not your time to speak. Please sit down.
Well, I have an unlimited period of time to straighten out the unlimited.
No, you'll have three minutes. Please sit down.
I can quote from the letter that you, I already did.
I wrote it. I gave it to you. You're not reading it full.
Please don't dialogue. Just address us.
So were there any other questions regarding the appeal?
No, I have to say that I'm, I'm really distressed by, I'm distressed by, sorry, I don't even quite know how to say this. I'm distressed by being told, we, we as a community rely on the information that we are given. We have procedures as a community, and I told him the ZBDA, I have a person there. We have procedures that are based on, I don't know what, assumptions of goodwill, and we can take certain actions. We just enacted the annual inspection stuff. But the practical reality is that if stuff like this is going on and we have no way to verify what's going on or what is, that things are maintained as they're supposed to be, then I can spend three months memorizing the settlement agreement. But if I can't go on the assumption that that's the terms of the end of the story, then it's a shame, you know, then there's no point in me doing it.
Right, enforcement. You're, you're saying that enforcement is very important.
Yes. Well, at this point, I'm saying that. I mean, I, you know, I hear that that's not what you guys are saying. Right? You're not talking about enforcement, are you?
No. I would say that enforcement is a factor and a discussion, but it's a whole other discussion. We're contesting these COs that were issued.
Right.
The COs, in this case, they lie. They misrepresent the building that they were issued for. And because they lie, because they're not truthful, they're fraudulent, and they should be revoked because they're not valid in the first place. Just on that basis.
Okay.
I also wanted to add, because I.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I read this quote earlier directly from Mr. Stengers' office when we were responding to this, and I'll read it again because he's accusing us of crucifying his client. But he states, "Mr. Jaffe confirms that no violations have been found with respect to my client's site. That confirms that, to the extent the pending application depends on the existence of a violation, it is without factual support." And there are, we believe the building inspector has made a mistake in his assessment that no violations exist. And that's the point that Terry is bringing up. The, the cover photo of this plus 40-page document shows a clear violation.
Can I give? Yes, what? A point of clarification. Whether or not we have standing to respond to what is being offered to us. I would, I don't want to, that's not my question now. My question is, in the course of whatever the discussion is, if other things become obvious, then do, do we refer them to?
Sure, so zoning board's jurisdiction is appellate. So the normal course of things is that a complaint is made to the building inspector, who then either investigates it or doesn't investigate it. Usually, they would investigate it and make a note. Yes, I investigated. There's no violation. Or yes, I investigated. There is a violation. That determination can then be appealed.
To us.
To this board.
Right.
So if other things come up, see, where this is, where this is becoming a little out of hand is that, you know, we were here on the two certificates of occupancy issued pursuant, and the challenge was pursuant to provision in the zoning law that said it had to be issued pursuant to a site plan. And now a lot of other things have come up. And it's kind of outside our normal course of procedure, which is that you go to the building inspector, you get a determination from him first, and then you, then this board would review his determination.
So.
On zoning issues, not on the building.
So.
Property maintenance issues.
So we would then, having heard what we've heard, we would ask the village board to follow through on this?
Sure, you could ask, I mean, he's identified potential violations. We don't, I mean, we don't know if these are actual violations.
Okay, let's stop dancing around on the violations.
Wait, wait, wait.
Tim, Tim. Wait a minute.
Let her finish, please.
Tim. It's not helping me to understand when you do that.
And the CO matches the building permit. So right there, that's not a violation to me, that they match. What we see here is a potential violation. I mean, I can't make a decision as to whether it's a violation or not. So, sure, you can ask the mayor, you can ask the village board, and you can ask the building inspector. You can identify these issues and ask them to inspect it and investigate. You can't force them to, but you can certainly bring it to their attention.
And so could the appeals.
Of course, yes.
And so, so taking a step back, we are appealing the certificate of occupancy that says construct a two-family dwelling with three bedrooms each. There are not three bedrooms each.
Or?
But you appealed to make it an occupancy.
Based on a particular provision of the zoning law. That's what your application said, and that's why we're here.
And so, I know it's very frustrating, but the zoning board of appeals sits like a court. And so we have to be very careful about what we're reviewing and what the issue is. And so the issue before this board, per your appeal, is whether or not the certificate of occupancy should have been issued because there was no site plan.
No. You can't build, you can't build a 14-bedroom building when you have a building permit and then issue a CO for a six-bedroom building.
I understand you're saying that.
That's all that sits.
But we, I mean, the certificate of occupancy matches the building permit, whether something.
And it doesn't match what was built.
Whether it was changed afterwards, I don't know. I haven't seen proof of that. But the question you've asked this board, the question you've asked this board is whether this CO should be revoked because it was issued not in conformance with a site plan. That was the specific question asked to this board when we started three or four months ago.
The letter that we sent specifically addressed the fact that the CO was issued in spite of the fact that multiple violations were in existence at the time. That's why we're appealing. Two reasons. One, the existence of multiple violations because you are not supposed to, you are not supposed to issue a CO when violations exist. You are not supposed to issue a CO when unsafe conditions exist. When you have a violation, or more than one violation, of the New York State Fire Code, that is an unsafe condition. That.
I agree.
Let me finish. That is grounds for not issuing a CO.
Correct, but this board has no authority over the fire code.
We are, we are appealing the CO and certificate of compliance for two reasons mainly. One, they were issued in spite of multiple violations existing at the time. Two, they do not, they falsely misrepresent the buildings for which they were issued. For example, the certificate of compliance for Buildings A and B, it says four bedrooms total in the original structure, five bedrooms total in the new structure.
Nine bedrooms total.
Now, yes, you had four bedrooms in the original structure. But in the new structure, you have way more than five. The new structure actually has two units, not one. It has three bedrooms in the basement unit, and it has five bedrooms in the upstairs unit, for a total of eight. This says nine bedrooms total. That's false. Because between Buildings A and B, you have 13 bedrooms total. This misrepresents the building for which it was issued. It's a false certificate. And that's why we want you revoked, not because of the fact that there were no problems with the site plan. That's another issue, but that's not, the main thing is there are violations and the fact that all the COs and the certificates of compliance are false. They misrepresent the buildings for which they were issued. They're not valid. They should be revoked. That's it. Those two conditions, that's why we're here.
So I'd like to add, too, there's a serious safety issue. When you have a permit to build six bedrooms and you build 14, and when our fire chief has told me, and he said, that I could quote him during this appeal, he said, "There's no way a ladder truck could access the buildings at Two Mohawk. The driveway pitch is too steep. There isn't enough room in the driveway." And he does not understand how the complex was ever built.
For this building, you need a ladder truck.
So.
I, I'm not saying there are not serious concerns here.
So we're gonna. So, we're gonna-
I'm trying to focus the board on the issue on appeal.
We're appealing these certificates of occupancy and compliance.
Okay.
Because they are not factual, they don't represent what was built. The floor plans clearly indicate these fourteen bedrooms.
And they were issued in spite of the fact that there were multiple violations existing at the time that they were issued.
Do you have anything you want to say?
You know, I wanted to just bring up the fact, I copied a letter that we had sent the Plains Road community-
Yes.
-two years ago in 2012, June. I'm just, I just highlighted, I have copies for you guys as well. This is a concern when we first heard about this being built, to Brogan first, please. And-
Do you have a copy for us?
I have, someone can have mine, I've already read it, I didn't know how many people were gonna be here. You know, when I first heard about this, I heard about it from, from the builder himself. He came and knocked on my door, wanted to introduce himself, he was very affable and friendly, and told me what he was building and what his plans were. I asked very specifically how many bedrooms, how many students, and he told me. And then, a few minutes later, within two hours, I found out from the building department that wasn't actually what he was building. He gave me false information right there and then. And I thought to myself, why did he come to me and tell me this when he wasn't even telling me the truth? He would have been better off not bringing it to my attention. I know he may have thought he was doing the right thing, but they weren't accurate with what was, what I was told from the village hall. So, when that happened, I contacted the Plains Road community, told them what I knew, and we came to one of the meetings and spoke at, you know, we did a little bit of research. But this letter was sent to you guys and probably the, I think this was just addressed to-
That was the planning.
The planning board, yeah. I'm sorry, it was the planning board. But some of the stuff that I want to highlight is, we were concerned about, and there's fifty people that signed this letter, sewage and flooding, traffic and parking, how narrow the street is at this point, and how dangerous that is for people to come in and out, household waste removal, noise, property values, these are just some of the things. But I just want to bring to your attention that this was, you know, at the forefront of our minds in 2012, long before it was built. And I do get that there was a settlement that came about, and, you know, that's, we didn't even know this was happening, basically, until the construction started going on. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. What? Oh, I got it, okay. So, do you have to write that last word? So, do you have anything else you want to say about it? Okay, if not, we will give Mr. Stengers twenty minutes.
We just had about forty-five minutes. Unchallenged, active, actual, these may be your new rules, but they are very unfair in their first application. First, I'd like to correct a misstatement made by Mr. Rogers on record. If you look on January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, your materials that I provided to this board, and this is why I need more than three minutes, I've got to correct these misstatements on the record, which I believe must be deliberate, only because of how thoroughly everything else is prepared. On February three, two thousand and fifteen, I wrote to the board, brought to the board's attention, response of Mr. Jaffe to the questions that I asked him, because I wanted to know, during all of this process, had anyone gone to his office and asked him, is any of this a violation? Because in my view, it was important that the building inspector had been contacted and asked that question. So, I thought that was an important factor for you to know, considering how to proceed in these matters. I got that answer. His answer is January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen.
What page do you want?
This is a letter that's in your record.
In here?
Yeah, is that, or which letter is that? My letter is dated-
January twenty-fourth.
February three, two thousand and fifteen. And attached to it is Mr. Jaffe's letter, dated January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. And I'd like to note, at the last meeting, I promised this board that everything I submitted to it, I would submit simultaneously a copy to Mr. Rogers, and tonight, I get confronted with this. I don't even get to see this before I get here. I don't get it courtesy of being emailed to me. I don't get the basic fairness that I know that I want your board's struggle to bring to this community in every step of its process. And so, if you do entertain jurisdiction, I'm going to ask for additional time to address this, because what I had to do was sit for forty minutes, listen to my client, we call him a liar, listen to him, we call him false, untrue, involved in, on a moral level, that just really struck, struck me as violated of your new rules tonight. And I couldn't truly respond to any of that, because I'd never seen this detailed level of complaint before, because it didn't exist. But in my investigation of what had happened before I got here, I wrote to Mr. Jaffe, his letter is dated January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. And so, I'd written him with two specific questions. One was, had anyone ever asked him for interpretation of the code? Because that's what this appeal was captured as, or captured as. And the answer was no. And then, I asked for that, this issue of the violations, because in my view, the building inspector has to act first before this board has jurisdiction to proceed. And I wasn't sure how this level of public accusation of violation could occur without having gone to his office first, and I didn't know if it had or not, because there was a lot of by-play between Mr. Jaffe and Mr. Rogers the last time I was here, and I didn't really follow all of it, or understand, obviously, I don't live here, I'm one of the players. Here's the question I asked him, here is his answer. And he types my question back in first, and it's a letter, it's in your file. It says, "Has anyone asked me to make a determination as to whether or not building code violations existed at the location of your client's building on the date that the certificates of occupancy for the same were issued by this office? If so, who, when, and how?" That's the question I wrote him. You didn't hear Mr. Rogers say that. His answer was, "No, no one has mentioned any violations until a public hearing's at the zoning board." At the time, there were several people making the accusations. The codes that were brought up were from the New York State Building Codes. Those codes do not apply in this case. Buildings of two-family dwellings fall under the New York State Residential Codes. Fire lanes and turnarounds that were quoted do not apply to the New York State Residential Codes as they would for the New York State Building Codes. I'm not going to argue Mr. Jaffe's opinion, that's not my point here. My point is, I thought it was important for you to know whether Mr. Rogers had done what every other citizen in this village would have done, which is go file a complaint with the building inspector, get a response from that building inspector, and bring it here. Or if there was some reason why that didn't happen, I thought that was an important factor. Clearly, Mr. Rogers did not, because he did not read you from Mr. Jaffe's letter. He relied on a summary of my letter to you, which covered that letter. I want you to know that. Look, I, I'm sorry, I just, I find it fairly amazing that I have to sit here and defend something I can't defend, over which this board may not have jurisdiction. It's difficult for me to sit peacefully, and I apologize for going over three minutes, I beg you to, in the New York-
Okay, I will give you up to six, and then that's it.
That's fine. But the problem I have here is that I've listened to a very detailed, one-sided, by-surprise, ambush analysis of the building permits and the COs and the construction included between them, and I frankly can't answer any of that tonight, because how could I? No doubt by design, it was the way it was proposed and planned. But the building inspector could have. If he had been consulted, he could have said to you what was going on there, if he had been consulted. If Mr. Rogers had followed the same procedure that every citizen in every village and town in this state follows, which is go to the building inspector first, and if you don't like what you get there, bring it to the board, because by then you'll have the issues framed, we wouldn't be here tonight. And I wouldn't be in a position of wondering whether I have to defend my client against these accusations. And I'm not going to do that. But in my view, with all due respect, this is an appellate board. I asked those questions specifically to see if an attempt was made to get some action from which an appeal could be taken. Didn't happen. The next big thing is, these applications are late. They were filed thirty-
Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
I'd like to, couple of considerations.
Okay. Okay.
It's unique because the-
Okay.
Not so popular.
Okay, so, what do I do, another ten minutes?
I will bow down to her at the end.
Okay, go ahead, say what you have to say.
I really have not much more to say, except that when I, I learned a lot at the last board meeting, and my findings about that were in my letter of January twenty-one, two thousand and fifteen. I went, I didn't realize that this application, the one that's for you, was dated September twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen, when it was filed. That filing was thirty-six days after the date of the issuance of the certificates of occupancy in question here. That's six days beyond statute of limitation. In my world, you can't fudge that. You live with the fact that you filed late, you didn't do your work right, your application's time barred. It's thirty-one days beyond the issuance of the date of the certificate of compliance. That is statute of limitations, that's an absolute bar. And I haven't heard anything from Mr. Rogers on this record.
Did you read the email I sent you, the whole, entire thread?
To explain on this record, for this board, to explain or offer any legal reason why that rule shouldn't apply to he as well. Because we are about rules, and rules are supposed to be applied to all of us. He's got a rule to follow. That doesn't bar him from leaving here today and going tomorrow and filing a complaint with the building inspector and saying, and saying everything he just said here, tonight, on the TV cameras, to the building inspector and say, "Hey, I think these are violations. Go out there and investigate, do what you have to do, and bring me back something." That doesn't stop him. And I, I'm not here to say, "Stop," but it's just so remarkably unfair to have to defend yourself against surprises. And I, I don't walk through those buildings, so I don't live in those buildings. I, there was one witness who spoke, and I'm sure her testimony is as accurate as she may know it to be. I have no reason to think otherwise, nor would I suggest that. But there is still that process of investigation that should be undertaken before anybody in this village is brought there in front of a television camera, in front of a whole village, to have to defend a project that on its face is legal, because only the building inspector can say otherwise. So, one, these applications, in my view, are time barred and should just go. Two, if they are time barred, it does not prevent on this issue of the interpretation, it does not prevent Mr. Rogers from going to the building inspector, do what he should have done the first time, which is bring all of that, that he just did to us, did, showed to us. And I make no comment on it, because I don't know. But I do know, for a first presentation, it's very unfair to not have any notices to what it is. Take it to the building inspector, let him investigate, let him issue the report, let him come back and say, "It's guru bad," and then, we'll all have a basis to say yes or no. He may come back and say, "They're right." He may come back and say, "They're not," but we'll know what that's about. We don't here, and that's the third part. This application that's being presented tonight is remarkably different from the application that was presented here, when it was timely filed, thirty-six days after the COs were issued. Remarkably different. And I haven't heard this board suggest that the existing application can be amended to include now these allegations, because I've looked at that original application.
Our allegations.
And that says very, very clearly, "We're looking for interpretation of the effect of a provision of the code." Now, now, it's true that, as this thing grew, the applicant has brought new materials to say, "Here's other reasons why they should be gone," but that's a separate matter. You just can't keep adding on. It's a separate application, which will involve a separate analysis, a separate investigation, and a separate test. And if truly all these violations exist, don't you think your building inspector will say so? Or if they don't, he will say so. And aren't, isn't this process, which is supposed to be about fairness, supposed to be about fairness more than anything, I love working in front of ZBA boards, because that's what it's about, letting the steam off the zoning code of the population. Doesn't fairness say we should follow the process all the way through, no matter how personally convinced one applicant might be, that their vision is so strong and so overpowering, that it does not need the benefit of the process? We all need the benefit of this process. If we don't all believe in it, that's why I come to these meetings. I want to thank you, Matt Chor, for letting me speak a little longer than you allocated. I felt there were some things I needed to say that were important to you. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
State law, village law, section seven dash seven twelve expressly allows sixty days to appeal something. If we had received notice at the time the COs were issued, we would have had the thirty days. But because we did not receive notice, and this gets into Pata versus Demiano, and this is an instruction by the New York Department of State, that we are to be allowed more than thirty days, and the limit for what is a reasonable time is in state law as sixty days. So, our appeal is timed, one. Two, we are appealing the issuance of the COs. We've never asked for interpretation. That is the form that we were given and told to fill out. And frankly, because appealing a CO is part of the code two twelve fifty-nine, and that we have never been allowed to file the correct form, quite frankly, I protest that.
Section two twelve fifty-nine A one, I read this before, "Procedure: Written submission required. All appeals and applications shall be made by the Board of Appeals in writing on forms prescribed by the Board of Appeals." So, let's, again, and you've all received these emails, this is the entire paper trail of, of our attempt to appeal these COs.
And we have never been given the proper form.
In early September, two thousand and fourteen, we became aware of the certificates having been thus issued by, for buildings at Two Mohawk Ave, and filed a FOIL request for copies of the documents from the property's files. After some discussion, we felt those COs should be appealed. Consequently, on September fifteenth, well within the thirty days, we emailed the village clerk the following question, "Is there a procedure for filing an appeal with the ZBA regarding a recently granted certificate of occupancy?" The clerk responded via email the same day. "I have sent a copy of your email to the village attorney, who has stated that I must inform the requesting party, we do not give out legal advice, and should either consult the village code or their attorney on this question." Our response to that is, "The attorney's reply and the clerk's response to our question are incorrect. Our request for information regarding filing a ZBA appeal was entirely appropriate question regarding how to proceed with a normal building department ZBA procedure. It was an intra-departmental administrative question, not a legal question, just as section two twelve fifty-nine A one, procedure on forms prescribed by the Board of Appeals." So then, on September seventeenth, we went into the, the building department and asked how for the form. We were offered the wrong form. It was actually an application for an area variance. The building department representative then told us that what we needed to do was file an Article seventy-eight. Once again, we asked for assistance regarding filing the appeal. We were given incorrect and misleading information. On September nineteenth, having been unsuccessful in our previous attempts to obtain the necessary forms and directions from both the building department and the ZBA secretary, I mailed copies of our letter stating our intent to appeal the certificates via certified mail, requiring signature receipts to the building department and the village clerk. These letters were mailed and postmarked within thirty days after the certificates issuance. On September twenty-fifth, the village planner emailed me with an appeal form, and that actually was not an appeal form, because we, to this day, we still don't have an appeal form. We have an interpretation form. And we were told it needed to be accompanied with a one-hundred-dollar fee. So, I went to the building department that afternoon with the completed interpretation form, which is still the incorrect form. the village planner emailed me with an appeal form. And that actually was not an appeal form, because we, to this day, we still don't have an appeal form. We have an interpretation form. And we were told it needed to be accompanied with a $100 fee. So I went to the building department that afternoon with the completed interpretation form, which is still the incorrect form, and the $100 fee. So...
There was another one statement that was incorrect. The statement that we never went to the building department in August. After this, the garage had been torn down, and the new building was under construction. Tim emailed the building department in August to ask if the ZBA had given permission for the sidewalk violation that was taking place. And he was told by the building department that they were just replacing the roof, that they were on it, they were watching it, and making sure that nothing went wrong. So again, we asked, well before the COs were issued, we asked during construction, and we were given false information.
Our attorney has something to say.
Oh, sure, I was just asked whether this was the appropriate form. And it says, when to use this form. When you seek an interpretation of the permissions of the zoning code as it relates to any order requirement decision determination made by the municipal code enforcement officer. So the form that was completed is the correct one.
Except that counselor...
And we never got it, even though we asked for it multiple times.
He keeps saying it's inappropriate for us to ask for interpretation, because we never asked the building inspector for the interpretation. But we're not asking for interpretation. We are appealing the issuance of the COs.
I also want to say that we repeatedly emailed Mr. Jaffe asking about these code violations. And all he ever responded, and we wanted it in writing, all he ever responded to us was, come to my office and see me and talk to me. Which we did go down there once or twice, Timmy and I, and he was not there. And then, so we would just ask an email, and we would talk to Bren. She gave us her information, but he never answered our questions. And from the very beginning, Mr. Jaffe was very defensive, and there was no accusation at him. We just wanted to know X, Y, and Z. And he said, you know, I know my job, I know what I'm doing. I don't know, I'm sure you guys saw copies of that. And my response to him was, please don't... We're not attacking you in any way, shape, or form. But from the very beginning, we had been asking him about code violations. Not as lengthy as this, because now we've had time to go through it all. But from the very... So for him to say that the process is to go to the building inspector first, we did. So he's completely incorrect in that.
And also in those initial emails with the building inspector from August, we asked for the items that were described in the settlement agreement, namely, the stormwater disturbance calculation, as well as the parking plan that was supposed to be reviewed by the engineer. So if those things exist, they could have been shared with us. And to this day, we still have never received anything.
Have you submitted a FOIL request?
Absolutely.
And you don't seem to have any back?
Okay.
I'm concerned about pulling this hearing to a close.
We want to bring this hearing to a close. So we have heard what you have to say.
Did she just make a motion?
No, I didn't. I'm consulting other people about that.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, do you have anything you want to ask? So...
I think another point of clarification, too, is it's a pretty simple situation. We're appealing these certificates based on safety, based on number of bedrooms. So all of this other detail is not... We're not here to... We're only offering that for illustration, to help you understand the magnitude of what's gone on here. We're not asking you to make a ruling on these violations. We're only asking you to respond to our appeal of the certificates. So Mr. Stenger seems to be confused by the fact that we're... We're just providing you with additional color so you have a full understanding of what has gone on here.
Okay, thank you.
My question, I just will leave it open for the board. If the board is going to exercise jurisdiction, I request time to address those issues, because they were just sprung on us tonight. If the board is not going to continue to exercise jurisdiction as a matter, I have nothing more to add to this here.
So one option for the board, you could close the hearing and keep open a written comment period, a week or 10 days, to give him time to respond.
Would that be for you?
Well, I would far not spend the money to respond to that if this board were to say it should go to the building inspector first and then come to us, and then I would deal with it. Part of the reason why we have this level of engagement in process is not make this process so publicly pressured and expensive when you have a group of neighbors who are unhappy with the development by allowing the process itself to go forward orderly. You go to the building inspector first, the building inspector investigates. He takes my client is a cafe with the plans, says this, this, and this. Let's go out, let's look. He makes a report. I'm a lawyer. I have to go hire an engineer now to review everything that they said and spend more money, thousands of dollars, against accusations which may or may not be considered by this board when it ultimately acts. I would urge you to reach a decision as to jurisdiction first, so that we need not bear that expense if in the end you ultimately do not exercise jurisdiction. But again, this is what I go back to. I didn't say it. Mr. Jaffe said it. It's his letter, not mine. There was nobody came down to the building department and said, here's violations, go look at them. That should have happened here, no matter how you characterize this application, whether it was filed later or not. I assume all is done in good faith, but it should have happened, because if he could have told us what's important to look at, why does my client have to spend all this money addressing a shotgun full of accusations, which may not, or may be? I don't know enough to say one or the other, but they're made. Should we have to address every one of them if none of them are going to be important to the exercise of the jurisdiction by this board? Because the building inspector shouldn't have done it first. So I would prefer we get that done first, if that's possible.
What is your wisdom on this? Close the hearing and leave it open for comments for two weeks and funds?
Well, I don't know if the public would be able to make a statement tonight at all.
And advise the appellants to go to the building department and submit a blizzard of complaints that are specific to those issues?
So if you're going to close the public hearing tonight, you should take any additional comments from the public before you close it. And then I would recommend a written comment period.
A written comment period, you said?
Of only a week. In the meantime, I agree, you should recommend that the applicants go and discuss the issue with the building.
Well, we have a resolution.
I would... Wait, wait, hold on. Is someone just going to...
Well, actually, which is clarifying. I came late, and I didn't know. I said, there had been time before.
Well, we'll let you. We'll let you. If you want to say something...
Three minutes? One minute.
Yeah, just no more than three.
Exactly.
We need a name?
I'm Susan DeMark. I live at 7 Da Vinci. And I just want to actually applaud my neighbors who have done this work. I don't think people are out to get Mr. Jaffe per se at all. But I covered for many years, for a bunch of years, planning boards and zoning boards in New Jersey, and also was a city editor. I find what has been built, what the company has built at that corner without, you know... It seems to me to raise a lot of issues. I, as a resident of the borough, would like there to be much more looking into this. I don't feel sorry for the client's attorney tonight saying, well, we're going to have to go at some expense. I think some legitimate issues have been raised. I'd like to know what the fire chief feels about the size of this thing. I was here in 2012, and what Mr. Jaffe said was going to be built there seems to have been completely different than what did end up being built there. And there may be this settlement that guides it, but I think that these gentlemen and Ms. Paul have done a lot of homework. And as a resident, I'm concerned about public safety, about safety of people who are living there, let alone the rest of the people around, and about community values and property values. And so I hope that this isn't railroaded at all and not, you know, to say like... I do want to know what was the role of the building inspector in this, but then, I really think that before anything else happens, that the zoning board does need to be very clear on as to what you want to do about it, so... Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Which might you do your name on the signature?
Thanks for that opportunity.
So our attorney is proposing to close the hearing, but to continue to take written comments for one week and to advise, and we can do that.
Well, the advising is up to you. You're permitted to advise.
Certainly.
What does that mean, we're permitted to advise?
Well, what we've heard is that there are violations, or alleged violations, that need to be reduced to writing. Needs to be complaints filled out and given to the building department so that there can be action.
But that seems to me like that's a...
That's critical.
Critical, or is that...
That's critical.
It's critical, but it seems like that's a different issue in terms of what we're doing.
That won't stop this.
Right, that will not stop this.
No. But if you want the building department to look at alleged violations, you should, I think, do what I've done in the town and the village, is go and write out a complaint form. And then, and this is the critical point, follow up every two weeks to find out what's going on.
But when we're working under a time limit, as the council says?
Yes, but the time limit's off now, and you're still alleging violations that you haven't taken to the building department. So we have a couple of different handfuls of things that need to be dealt with here. That's my particular take on it. I don't know how the other board members feel, but I think it's very important that you get back down to basics with the building department and follow up, follow up, follow up. Are you allowed just to follow ups?
Excuse me. Sorry. Excuse me. Okay.
So is there a motion?
I'm about to ask for a motion. Okay. I am about to ask for a motion. Do you want to say anything else, Mr. Stenger? So I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing and to accept written comments until the close of business on Tuesday, February 17. Is my arithmetic good? Is Tuesday, is next Tuesday, is that the 17th?
That's one week from tonight.
That's one week from tonight. May I have that motion? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, you got your move in. You got your second. All in favor? Okay, the motion carries. So thank you very much. Do we want to take a little break? We're going to take a five-minute break.
Katie.
Thank you, Your Excellency. We appreciate it. I'm so sorry to have the box. Thank you very much for everything you've done.
I love it.
We've got a response from Mark Jones. All the other questions, is he addressed in the settlement or through the department?
I'm not so... As a ZBA person, I'm a wife. Which is to say, I'm sitting there, my time is here, and I'm hoping one way or another, like this or whatever, you see. I'm going to get a... So I'm not...
I had it.
Have you been concerned yourself?
To strengthen your position?
Just trying to get a sense of... I couldn't tell from the conversation with the BMA and the headman myself, but you're responsible to ask.
We've had the opportunity to be there, and I'm not... I don't want that to be quiet.
So if anything, just responding to those... Totally. It's very confusing. They don't tell you what building they're talking about and which face it is. Because they are all big and they are all the same stuff.
Yeah, it's all safe and thorough. You can't tell.
Now, what I realized is that... A question for my...
What are we doing now? We're doing the yard, three yards.
No, we just...
Pick up a lot. What are we doing now? This?
We did that.
We're all done?
We're doing these things.
Maybe that's bright side.
Dave, are you sick in any way? I mean, if I had known that he had pulled up, my question would have been... I'd have the explosion, so I'm not going to shake me up.
That's fine. I just want to know.
Yeah. Yeah, I was not moving over the house. Well, this stuff doesn't need... This stuff doesn't need any moving.
Just a minute. You know, nothing bad.
I hate to say it, but...
Yeah, here we take off.
Yeah, I think I'm more than ready.
Yeah. Nothing important here. I mean, it's all important, but it's not critical to your presence. I think that's all exciting.
Is there a way to say that you're worried about it? Taking less of your time?
I don't know.
I'd like to get these things like this. Like this.
Are we back?
Yes.
But are people already...
I don't know if you were here on that.
Yes.
You know this is... Okay, so...
This is a...
I don't think they did any of that.
Right now?
No.
Are we ready? Yes. Yeah, I sent it out to...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, she wants to hear it.
Hey. Okay.
Have you called? Are we still on TV?
We still are broadcast, right?
We're exciting, we're many, but we're...
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a resolution from our attorney. And the resolution is in respect to ZBA 1416, application of Teresa Paul.
Property ID, 86.41-2-1. Owner, No Place Like Home Development Corporation. Now, is this appropriate at this time?
This resolution?
Yes, given that we are gathering...
Sure, so, why don't you read it and we can discuss it?
Okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the ZVA has received numerous allegations of potential code and zoning violations at Two Mohawk Avenue that raise important health, safety, and enforcement concerns, and that the ZVA directs its secretary to provide the village board of trustees and building inspector with a copy of the appellant's supplemental submission submitted on January 29th, 2015, so that it may determine whether further investigation of the claims is warranted. So, we have our... First of all, may I have the, may I have a motion on that?
So, moved.
Okay, so now there is discussion.
Now, you need a second.
Second, thank you, and so now we will discuss it.
This is undated, but I understand from Brogan that this was submitted on January 29th, 2015, so this is the submission that would be referred over.
Okay. So then, for, can I ask that for the, for the files, for the records, that perhaps a, a, a copy of the cover sheet of this be included with whatever goes into the file, so it's clear what the reference is to the materials submitted, or would a whole copy of it go?
Whole copy.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
You know, you know, just moving forward too, if you could date stamp things when they come in, it would help.
I'm actually not even entirely sure if it was on the 29th. I went into the office and found it, so I'm assuming.
Okay, when was received on the 29th?
Yeah, I looked at them on the 29th.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes, so they were received on the 29th, so is there discussion on this motion? Is there any reason to delay, given that we will be getting other information? Maybe not, maybe so, I'm just throwing it out there. I feel this has been going on for three months, four months, it's been going on a long time, and I think we need to get some clarity. These are allegations. We don't know what it is that the village board may choose to deal with it, but particularly when we're talking about safety issues, several times this evening, I have heard mention of some doubts about the firefighting capability, and that's not something I take lightly. There are, I think it's important to make sure that these residences are accessible by firefighting if they're, so I think it's important to send it to the village board of trustees and building inspector and...
Well, we're having discussion before it's been seconded.
No, it was seconded.
Oh, you did second it, oh, I couldn't hear you down there.
So, I suppose if other material comes, excuse me, comes to light after we forwarded this, we'll forward that other material and keep the village board full of paper.
Yes. And I, I'm not remembering that the floor plans that they showed are in this.
No, not everything is in that.
Right.
But the building inspector would have access.
And they're not in our papers either.
I'm sorry?
We didn't get copies of the floor plans.
No, no.
No.
But I think the building inspector has access to the floor plans, and this certainly gives an outline of issues that have been raised, allegations that have been made, and I think it is something that we really do need to pass on to the village board. I would like to add to this, the written issues of Mr. Stenger. Okay. We should not forward it half a package. Okay. So, you would like to amend the resolution to include... The February 3rd communication. Well, anything from Stenger in regard to this issue. We shouldn't, we shouldn't do half the story. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you'd be providing the village board with a copy of the appellant's supplemental submission submitted on January 29th, 2015, the February 3rd letter from Ken Stenger, and any future submissions from either appellant or Stenger, addressing the code violations.
Okay, let's see, that would be February 3rd package, that was a big package, and then...
There's one on...
There's something for you on the, on the 4th of February.
And I corrected him and asked him to stop addressing things to me and told him they should all be coming to the board.
Okay, so that also should go.
So, what did you say?
That Stenger's letter to Victoria on February 4th also be part of it.
Can't we just say that all relevant material be included?
Well, I think they need to, I think we need to tell them. I, I, I think that also Stenger's letter of, I would say, January 21st and January 15th, because in that letter there is a letter from Joe Ariel that sheds some light on some of the issues, so... You can do that? Yeah, I would add those as well. And if they run out of reading...
Which one is that?
Or is it two? Yeah, it's, it's... No, I think this is enough for us to deal with.
Yeah.
I think this lists out what the problems are.
Yes.
So, we would add February 3rd, Jan. 21, and Jan. 15 from Attorney Stenger. And...
And future...
February 4, and, and any...
Oh, for...
Future communications from...
Stenger.
Stenger, from the attorney only.
Well, and, and from the appellant, if they have any...
Okay, and future correspondence.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that's actually not covered by that, is it?
What? What's the question?
The, the, the second parking lot. That's actually not in Two Mohawk. Well, yeah, that's unfortunate that the term Two Mohawk sort of is being used to take in this whole mess, I mean, whole project.
I believe they discuss it in the submission.
Well, very tangentially, but I think it is significant that it is not on the same lot.
So, you want to add another clause? And to investigate the parking situation on the 16.1?
I, I don't know. 16.1 is the lot number?
Pencil Hill Lot.
Pencil Hill Lot.
Pencil Hill Parking Lot.
Yeah.
That's early part of the section.
What?
In front of the board, yes, in front of the planning board.
Right, but...
It's not part of the two.
It's a violation.
Potential.
Potential.
It is a potential violation. But it is, it is, it is separate from the address Two Mohawk.
Why don't you do it by identifying the original property lots?
The original property lots were Lot 16 and Lot 17, and they have been urged to become 16.1. And lots...
One and two?
No, it was one and 18. One and 18. That became 1.1.
Yes.
Yes.
So, I think we're making this more complicated than it needs to be.
Okay.
So, why don't we say the ZVA has received numerous allegations of potential code and zoning violations at Two Mohawk Avenue and at the Pencil Hill Lot.
The adjacent Pencil Hill Lot.
That raise important health safety and enforcement concerns, and that the ZVA directs its secretary to provide the village board of trustees and building inspector with a copy of the appellate supplemental submission submitted January 29th, 2015, and then January 15th, 21st, February 3rd, and February 4th correspondence from Attorney Ken Stenger, and any future correspondence from either parties, and that it may determine whether further investigation of the claims warrant.
Okay, so you accept the amendment?
I agree.
Okay, and the second accepts the amendment. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. But do you have to do it roll call? Is that why this is spelled out like this?
We all... Oh, I just... We just have one absence. We have one absence. And the rest of us, aye. Could I have a motion to continue the conversation on the ZVA 1416 until the March 10th, 2015 meeting?
So, move.
Second. You seconded this time.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, data has indicated that we may need to leave as we continue on with the last two items. Do you want to cut off?
Is there something you want me to say more, or?
I don't, no, I don't think you need to say...
Say what?
Do you want to vote? Do you have an issue to discuss with the attorney involving litigation or potential litigation?
I guess not.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
See you all next month. Let's try to finish this by mail, okay?
How does it?
Your board is here, this is a copy.
You have a copy?
Oh, Brogan, it's, it's my Brogan's cup, is this a file copy?
Um, yes, actually, that is.
Okay.
Do you have a copy?
You do.
I have a copy, yes.
Okay, good, good, good.
Okay, so...
I'm working on getting a PDF. It's in the room.
We are now to, we are to the minutes yet, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the fourth and fifth items on the agenda are kind of the same thing. I ask that people receive a copy of the zoning enforcement publication by the Department of State, and the people who are still here, what this is, the Department of State has published a sort of guide for the citizen in approaching the zoning board of appeals, and I think that it would be very nice if we put something similar on our website that explained the steps that needed to be taken in order to bring appeals to the board of, the zoning board of appeals, because I think it sometimes is a little confusing for people. So, I don't know if we want to adopt what is in here, make our own version of it, make it a little simpler, and make it fit the local characteristics. I, I think it probably is worth looking through here and making sure that everything they're saying is consistent with what we actually do locally. That won't be the case, because, you know, it won't be the case. I think we, I think it would be better to simply refer to it and give people a way to grab it online and to read it online.
But also, if you're trying to make it super user-friendly, maybe just having like a step one, do the step two, do that, and then say, "Refer to," and then the dash is...
Are you okay?
Yeah.
I can all just...
Can I, can I do my work?
Give me a good spoon.
That's it, okay.
When I open that.
Yeah, and, but, I mean, that's one of my concerns, is there are a lot of forms here, and I don't want to confuse people. Should, yeah, go ahead, Brad.
What if we compiled a frequently asked questions for ZVA?
She's so good.
And kind of gave the basics in that.
I like that idea, and if we could somehow go from the forms that we have up there and say, "See question number blah, blah, blah in the FAQ," but I would like something like that, so that people, first of all, can sort of understand the process from their home, because people work a lot of weird hours, and sometimes getting into the village offices during the times that you guys are working, I mean, everybody's got kind of a different working day, and so if we had something in writing that accompanied the forms, which I'm really glad we have up now, this would kind of expand the accessibility to people. So, yeah, I just, I, I think it would be a good thing, and I think it's also important that people understand what the ZVA can do and what the ZVA can't do, because, you know, I wish we had the power everyone imagined we have, but it would be, I think, a more productive process for everyone if they understood what it was that we were actually able to do and where the limits are. So, yes, Sally?
Katie and I talked about this a little bit. I would suggest you concentrate on appendix one through six. The administrative search warrant application, I don't think, is something a citizen needs to know about.
Yeah, yeah, which is why, why I didn't think we wanted the whole thing up.
But basically, what Katie asked me was, how can we have upon the website, if some, because we were talking about, you know, ordinary citizen X noticing something and wanting the possible violation investigated.
Yeah.
And that is very different than the forms you would have up, such as, you know, appealing for, you know, for a variance.
Well, we have a complaint form up.
And this is an enforcement decision.
These...
Yeah, no, there are way too many.
Another process.
Yeah, which is why I was suggesting we not do the whole thing.
Yeah.
Because I think it is, it will just confuse people, and, you know, somebody might be really annoyed at a neighbor and fill out the criminal substance form or something, you know. There are things in here we don't need to be putting out.
But I think the simple process of what the zoning board does...
Yes.
The six questions that Katie read tonight, what you base your decision on, those should be up. I think that's a very good idea, and how, if I'm citizen X and this is citizen Y, and she put up a 10-foot fence, how do I complain about this?
Yeah.
And that's what's missing in this process, and I think that is a very good idea to put that up.
I mean, we've even had problems with people who didn't understand that they needed to come to the zoning board of appeals for a variance request.
But also, what you could, you know, go to the building department and ask that it's not necessarily that you want a permit or you want, "But she wants to complain about my fence."
Yes.
And that process is not there right now, and I think your idea is a very, very good one, and it would be a very simple explanation of what the ZVA does, the six questions it must ask.
Yes.
And the answer, and what do I, what do I as a citizen, if I notice something and wanted, you know, and, and the building department can very quickly address some of those things just by phone call.
Right.
The fact is, how do I do that? If it's a simple thing, I call the building department and say, "How will I handle this?" Or I can just fill out the complaint form.
Yeah.
And I think that should be, as you and I talked about, right up on the website, Brogan, under the zoning board of appeals, you can have.
Okay, but the question is, who's going to do this?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable doing that, Brogan?
Yeah, I can do websites.
Okay, good.
I hope she does it all.
But I would suggest, if you make a motion directing your secretary to do this, and that you, the zoning board feels desired of this, to be up on the website as an action of this board, the board has to go.
Okay, but I mean, do you also feel comfortable adapting the textual stuff from here? I mean, it's...
Yeah, clearly.
Public access plagiarized, let no one else's work e-magiarized.
Yeah.
It's not copyrighted. I mean, it's, it's a public document, so you can...
You can just scan it as is.
You can take entire paragraphs if they apply, and...
under the zoning board of appeals, you can have.
Okay, so the question is, who's going to do this?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable doing that, Brogan?
Yeah, I can do websites.
Okay, great.
I hope she doesn't.
But I would suggest that you make a motion directing your secretary to do this, and that you, the zoning board feels desires this to be up on the website as an action of this board, your board has to go.
Okay. But I mean, do you also feel comfortable adapting the textual stuff from here? I mean, it's...
Yeah, fairly.
Public access plagiarize, let no one else's work y majorize.
Yeah.
It's not copyrighted. I mean, it's, it's a public document, so you can...
You can just scan it as is.
You can take entire paragraphs if they apply, and...
Right, and it'll be referenced.
And it'll be referenced.
Not like we're taking...
Right, exactly, but I mean, we don't have to...
Brogan, the six questions.
The criteria.
Yeah, the criteria needs to be...
Not, and you'll have to add that.
But those are for an area, for a variance.
Area and use.
And, yeah. Those are for variances, but I think that we also need some explanation of how people complain about something they're seeing in the neighbor, neighborhood, so.
Should we make a video?
But is that, is that something they're complaining to us?
Well, it depends on what it is. I mean, they, they need to know that it's, it's not, zoning board of appeals is not their first step. Their first step is to go to the building department, and they need to understand that.
So maybe there's a little line in there that says, "Other than area and use variances, what else does the ZBA do?" Well, the ZBA does not enforce the code, the ZBA does...
And here is what you do, yes.
Right.
You know what I could do, if you're familiar with Google Doc?
Yes.
I can make a Google Doc of a draft, and then everybody can have their input and change it.
I think that's a meeting.
Okay.
I think, I think it would be subject to open meetings law.
Really? If, if, if we have a draft of what the content for the website should be.
I would talk to Mrs. Freeman.
I'm sorry?
But I have a question about that. I called the ZBA and never recovered.
Oh, right. Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I'm just saying, from your perspective, would you want...
Just working on a Google Doc where you couldn't see it?
It could be more public though.
You know me, I, I don't...
Yeah, it isn't, what?
Well, Google Docs you can do two ways. We could just invite the people on the ZBA to do it, or...
It would be like me writing something, saying, "Hey, can this go on the website?", and then showing it to you. I could even send it in a document, but it would be a little bit more tedious and not as efficient, and then you giving your revisions.
Yeah, I just don't want to violate open meeting laws.
You're doing information for the public.
This is an administrative thing.
This is administrative.
The judicial.
We're trying to make it easier.
Yeah, 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 that makes it easier.
We're trying to make it easier for people to know how to proceed without going into the building department and filling out the wrong application.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That is administrative, it is on your website as a part of the village whip, right?
It's not really public business, and they're going to see it eventually. If they don't like it, they can come in at it. I'm just, you know, trying to...
Well, but I mean, your initial idea, I think, is very good. But the more information you can give the public, and the more the public can understand, because they don't want to feel foolish, and if they could go to the website, hit zoning board of appeals, and see what the process is, what this board does deal with, then you could have a link right to the building department for, here's how you can do a complaint.
Okay.
And it's very simple.
Okay, so we can make a motion concerning that. And then, I have one more thing that will probably, I honestly don't know which way we should go with this or what the unintended consequences and pitfalls are. But it occurs to me that I'm troubled by the lag time between certain documents being issued, a certificate of occupancy, a building permit, what have you, and when the public might actually find out about it. Because, you know, how, how do people know it? We're in the 21st century. We have got these great communication media, yeah?
Go ahead, I'm, I'm antsy.
Okay, no, I mean, we have these communication media. Is there some way that there could be, I don't know whether we post the document or simply post a summary title of it, so that somebody knows that on, you know, February 10th, property XYZ was given a building permit? Because, you know, in this weather, it, six weeks could pass before somebody thinks they're ready to start building, at which point they would then be required to post it, and the title would be passed for someone to read it. Yes?
The new law that was passed saying that all planning actions need to go to the planning board means that all planning actions have to go to the planning board before they get a building permit. So I think that that may solve your problem, because we've talked about putting planning and ZBA applications on the website, and there's public hearings for all that stuff.
And they are on the...
It would help the permit issue, okay, the time that you're talking about anymore.
Okay, I got it, okay.
It has to go to the planning board. Brogan puts out a very good agenda for the planning board. If I'm concerned that Bren is going, lives next door to me, and, you know, she's going to add a huge addition, it's got to go to the planning board. I can go to the planning board and talk then about what she wants to do that I feel might be whatever.
Yeah, I got you. What triggers the letters that have to, what triggers the letters that have to go to?
200 feet, I think.
So if someone, when, in, in this new routine, if it goes to the planning board and it's going to move forward, then these letters have to be sent.
Okay, so that works for the building permit.
What about for a certificate of occupancy?
In a normal world, a building permit is issued according to the law, and a certificate of occupancy is issued if the building permit is, if the building is done as per the building permit. So the CO really goes with the building permit. It shouldn't, there shouldn't have to be two announcements, because it should be the same thing.
Okay. And now, it's not just the building permit, because the building permit doesn't get issued till the planning board has reviewed the whole thing and approved it, then the building permit is issued, and the building must be ordered according to what the planning board has approved. So in a sense, the certificate of occupancy is
Okay.
a pro forma thing.
Well, except though...
Should that be?
No, I, I should, I don't agree with that at all, because if, I mean, we're confronting this now.
Under the old law.
No, no, I understand, and so I'm asking how it's different. Because if the certificate of, the only person, the person who is responsible, I'm assuming, for this point in the stream of things is the building inspector. He goes and he says, "Yep, it meets all of the provisions for the permit. I'm issuing a certificate of occupancy." Well, what I think we're saying, what I would be saying is, I don't think the certificate of occup... Given our history and given the stuff we're trying to clean up, I don't think at this point in time, a certificate of occupancy should be pro forma. I think people, other people should, I, if I, if I know your project is done, I live next door to you, and I, and your project is done, and all of a sudden you get a certificate of occupancy, and I'm saying, "Hey, wait a minute, did they look in the backyard? There's three piles of dirt there."
That's a different thing. That's altogether a different thing, because even under the old law, and Bren, if I'm wrong, you are issued a building permit, you're allowed to X, Y, Z.
Right.
As you are progressing, I should be seeing whether you are doing X, Y, and Z.
Well, at some point, I understand the history here, but you have to trust that people are doing their jobs.
And if they aren't, fire them.
Yeah.
But you don't find out until after the fact, and things have already gotten screwed up. And I would like to, all I'm asking, I'd like to see us prove that that works before we put it in place.
May I say something?
Please.
It's not your jurisdiction.
Okay. That's right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good discussion. Did you vote to?
We haven't done that.
Not yet, no.
We're getting there, we're getting there. I just, you know, that might have been in the... No, so we took your, that, play away, Leo. Oh, that was the same. We took your paper away just to...
Oh, hi, I do remember.
Yes, okay. So we have, we have a motion on the table to, well, we're discussing it. Do we have a motion on the table?
Not yet.
Okay, so.
Can I make motions?
Why not?
Okay. I would like to make a motion.
Why don't you make one?
To ask, to ask the zoning board of appeals secretary to write a draft of frequently asked questions of interest for people who would be coming before, who would maybe be coming before the zoning board of appeals or not coming before the zoning board of appeals. I don't know quite how to say that. I mean, because part of it's not our business, because we're saying it's not our business.
We could just say, "For the public."
For the public, in terms of what can and can't be done before the zoning board of appeals.
And then you want to link it to the building department's board's plain form.
Yes, and link these to the, to the building department's forms. It's been a really long day.
They linked it. It's getting late.
This too, Shana?
This too, yes, okay, so, do I have a second on that motion?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so could I have a motion to approve, to, there is a motion to amend the minutes from October 14, 2014, to reflect proposed changes from Mrs. Rocko?
Yes.
Ms. Rocko?
Yes, wherever it is.
Do you need a copy?
I have it someplace. Strike, mark, the word, mark it.
I mean, yeah, I'll, I'll just make a note of it.
Okay, so, right.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What is this? It's a simple correction where the heading refers to 15 Water Street, and then in the text of the motion, it says 15 Water Street Market. We just need to strike, mark it.
Okay.
Okay.
Our second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 13?
Sure, I, so move.
Okay, is there a second?
Me.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Can we all move at once?
Is there a second?
I'm, I'm...
Okay.
And may I applaud?
And wait, 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 we are officially adjourned at 9:25. Geez, I think that's 9:24. We know how to...